Okay, welcome back to the county council meeting. We had some technical issues. I believe we are back up. We will resume the meeting with, I would entertain a motion to approve the October 26 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Any discussion from council? Questions, corrections? Roll call, please. Donna?
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes. Okay, and we have a resolution. Up today, a resolution of the Delaware County Council authorizing and approving an addendum to interlocal agreement for joint communication center, resolution 2021-050. Is that correct?
Yes.
Now, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Jane and Ryan?
Got the second.
Ballard.
It can be me or Jessica, it doesn't matter.
Ballard.
Okay, motion from Ballard, second from Piper?
No, motion from Jane.
Motion from Jane. Second from Ballard. Okay, all right. Everybody was jumping on that at once, so.
We're excited about this one.
Anyway, we've got a motion and a second.
Moving on.
Any discussion from council?
Which one is it?
Bill, do you have anything? You've had an opportunity to look over the...
All this does is extend the interlocal agreement regarding the communication center between the city and the county for an additional one year until the end of next year. Nothing else changes.
And the dollar amount is?
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred thousand dollar payment.
Brian, do you have anything? Ballard, do you have anything you want to discuss on that?
You know, I think it's tough negotiating with another municipality that has, you know, some financial troubles. And I think we've continued as a county to try to recognize that and work with the city. And we just couldn't come to an agreement with a new interlocal. But all of us were willing to go back to, you know, last year's and see if we can continue to work on it. These things take a lot of time and there's a process to it. So we're just, we're trying to get it all on the same playing field and we just weren't, but we were able to agree on something. So I think that's better than zero.
Absolutely.
So that's where I'm at.
And at this point, I think we've got an approval from the commissioners?
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay, but no other bodies have yet approved this?
As a city?
Well, they haven't signed it. John was going to get their signatures once they have their meeting and talk about it.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know when their meeting was this month.
And then we've got the resolution and then are we approving an agreement?
Your approval, your resolution approves the agreement. We'll have you sign both the resolution and the signature copy of the agreement.
Okay, everybody clear on that? Okay. Roll call, please. Donna?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes. All right, and that is all we need to do to get that approved and then we'll just get, make sure everybody signs that before they leave today. No ordinances for approval, so we are on to the transfer and financial agenda. Donna, are you gonna, oh, Tanya's gonna read those in. Okay.
Tanya's doing it.
All right.
I'm reading.
Start with the transfer.
All right. We start with Circuit Court Department, A 168, court reporter, negative 1,700. C 136, Assistant Court Reporter, negative 1,200. C 139, Assistant Court Reporter, negative 1,200. C 165, Court Secretary, negative 1,200. 312, Court Ordered Attorneys, positive 5,000. 441, Office Equipment, positive $300. Total zero.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Lassiter. Any discussion from council? Roll call, please. Donna?
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Communication. B 130, Communication Tech, negative 13,161.05. C 130, Communication Tech, positive 13,161.05. Total zero.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Webb. Any questions from council? Roll call, please. Donna?
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Next, Public Defenders. Salary 150, negative 1,800. Salary 155, negative 750. Health Insurance, 193, negative 1,000. Office Supplies, 211, positive 3,550. Total zero.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Lassiter. Questions from council? Would you go ahead and tell us about this? You weren't able to make that finance committee meeting.
Yes, I apologize for that. We had so much turnover in attorneys, we happened to have some extra money in those salary lines and the little bit left in the health insurance. And so these office supplies are what we pay. I last month got money to put in office supplies to pay up the attorneys for their copies of the discovery that they are required to send to their clients, our defendants. So this is going to get us through the rest of the year in that line.
Any questions from council? Roll call, please. Donna?
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Jail, 145. E 161, Cook, negative 3,406.60. F 161, Cook, positive 3,406.60. Total zero.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Any questions from council? Roll call, please. Donna?
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Next up, Sheriff, 129. B 138, Deputy, negative 32437. D 111, Sergeant, positive 96.08. B 101, Sheriff, positive 22829. C 138, Deputy, negative 350. B 101, Sheriff, positive 350. Total zero.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Webb. Any questions from council? Roll call, please. Donna?
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Highway. C 143, Truck Driver, negative 1,469. D 143, Truck Driver, positive 1,469. 170, Part-Time, negative 30,000. 160, Overtime, positive 30,000. Total zero.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Lassiter. Any questions from council?
Yes, sir. Do you have a question, Carrie? On the overtime, moving from part-time to overtime, is that in preparation for overtime that's going to be used?
Yes.
It's not that they use that much overtime?
No.
Okay.
We're just getting ready, just in case we need it. We don't know how much snow we're going to get. Just to be safe.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Any further questions from council? Roll call, please. Donna?
Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Jail, Lowet. C 111, Correctional Officer, negative 6,13882. D 111, Correctional Officer, positive 6,13882, for a total of zero.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Webb. Questions from council? Roll call, please. Donna?
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now to the addendum.
First addendum.
First addendum.
Okay.
Okay, first addendum. Commissioners. 173, Health Insurance, negative 75,000. 325, Utilities, positive 75,000. Total zero.
Moved to approve.
Hang on.
Hang on a minute.
Please. The boss got these ready and they're not in order. Oh, he didn't give me them. Right here. Right here. This one. I'm sorry, who made the motion?
I did.
And second?
We don't have a second yet, I don't believe.
Second.
Okay, motion from Piper, second from Webb. Any questions from council? Roll call, please. Donna?
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
I'm not having a sheet.
Jail. 325, Medical Contracts, negative 12,11792. 224, Inmate Meals, negative 12,908.54. 311, Hospital Services, positive 25,000, 26.46. Total zero.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Webb. Any questions from council? Roll call, please. Donna?
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Bridge, 1135. 391, Ditch Reconstruction, negative 8,700. 441, Miscellaneous Equipment, positive 8,700, for a total of zero.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Lassiter. Would you guys just tell us and the public what this is?
Yes.
Thank you.
So we're going to buy a new hot box so we can use pot mix over the winter. We currently have four. Three of them are non-working. We can't get parts for them, so we have one that's currently working. This will give us a second one.
This is going to be a diesel and we could keep our cold mix hot. So that's what we're going to try this year. It's going to make it stick in the holes better.
Jessica?
This is basically for pothole and road repair and things like that?
Yeah. In the wintertime.
And the hot mix works way better than the cold mix?
Yeah, for the winter, we'll use cold mix in it to keep it cold, or keep it warm. And then, of course, in the summertime, we'll use it on holes with hot mix.
All right.
For the, uh, sorry, for the ditch reconstruction that the money's coming from, is that money that was saved over ditch reconstruction project or you just decided to not do it?
It's just leftover money.
It's just some leftover money that we were not going to use this year.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Roll call, please. Donna?
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Okay, next, we have Highway, 1176. C 146, Truck Driver, negative 9,000. D 146, Truck Driver, positive 9,000. Total zero.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Webb.
Oh, shit. Sorry. Thought I had turned off. Boy, we're good today, aren't we?
Any questions from council? Roll call, please. Donna?
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next, we have Project Income. 173, Insurance, negative 700. 199, Longevity, positive 700. Total zero.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Lassiter. Questions from council? Roll call, please. Donna?
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Surveyor Perpetuation Fund. 199, Longevity, positive 600. 311, Professional Services, negative 600. Total zero.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. All right. Questions from council?
Yes.
Roll call, please. Donna?
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you guys, you have a good day.
You too.
Thanks.
Addendum two.
What's that?
Addendum two.
Yeah.
Okay, we start with the Commissioners. 172, Per, negative 70,000. 386, Institutional Care, positive 70,000. Total should be zero.
That should say zero.
And this was moved from the general fund?
Right, when we get the additional preparations, you'll see we withdraw that one.
Okay, all right. I need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Questions from council? Roll call, please. Donna?
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes. Excuse me.
He made all these sheets for me, but he forgot to transfer.
Well, he didn't know, probably. Where'd he come in? I could give him a bunch of links.
Is that all on the?
It's all on the transfers.
Okay, all right, we're ready for county general.
All right, and that very first one of the Commissioners, that's the one that, at finance meeting, Scott asked if we could find money elsewhere to transfer, so I looked at Perf and FICA and got with Jim, and that's why you just approved the transfer, so this is going to be withdrawn.
Thank you for doing that, everybody. Okay, we're ready for a corner.
All right. New appropriations, corner, 198, Part-Time, positive 5,000. 311, Autopsy Lab X-Ray, positive 60,000. Total 65,000.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Webb?
Yes.
Is that right? Okay, all right. There was discussion in finance on this and there's just really nowhere, nowhere else to get this from but the general fund, unfortunately. And there aren't any other alternatives. I don't know if you have any thing you want to share from finance as far as the numbers of autopsies and things we've got going and?
When you and I talked, we had 18 full autopsies since October 28th to November 15th. Since Thursday, we've had six more, so we're at 24. We're out on a car fatality now, which takes us to 24. Full autopsies since the 28th.
It's a total dollar figure that we've spent this year in autopsies?
We were at 190 before I asked for the 60.
Every year it continues to go up.
Yes.
Yep.
Will this 65 then cover through the rest of the year? No.
So this is just going to cover what you've got going?
Well, when I met with Scott, we were already at 21.6 in the whole from the 18 autopsies that we had at 1,200 apiece. I've had six more, so 24 times 12. I'm not sure what we're at right now. And then I had three, three toxicology bills, one at 298, one at 60, and one at 98. I mean, just since we met, we've had six.
Well, there's nothing we can do. I just wanted to hear what the number?
Yeah. I don't know.
But is that over last year? He said it keeps going up. Do you have that number off the top of your head?
How many we did last year?
Is there a giant increase from last year or is it just gradually increasing?
Gradually increased. We asked for, what, 50,000 last year, and now we're asking for 60.
The cost of those is remaining the same at this point?
1,200 per autopsy.
Okay, and that's for full?
Yes.
Yeah.
Isn't this the second time you've come in and asked for money this year?
Yeah, I think it is.
I think it is.
Yeah.
Is that, that fee that contracted to where it can't go up anymore?
It's through the hospital, yes, I think that's what.
So is it a negotiable fee or is that just, they just say, hey, it's 1,200, take it or leave it?
1,200 is what they've charged us. I think out of county is a little bit different.
If that goes up, can you let us know?
Yeah, there was discussion, I think, last year that they wanted to charge us per body, so we were looking at different options, what we could do to pull out of the morgue. I think that they came to a resolution, thankfully. I know that they were wanting to charge us like 500 extra body after 48 hours or something. Yeah.
There's a lot of variables that comes into play. I don't know if that's quite a fair way to go about it, you know what I mean?
So Jessica, I don't know. We, I mean, we were at 18, we have 24 now. Like I told Scott, fire season's coming up, fire fatalities, heaters, we'll start seeing a lot of fire fatalities. I don't know if 65 will get us through, I'm hoping.
Yeah.
That's what the hope was on Thursday.
And now we've had six.
Well, and we know you, there's no way to predict how many we're going to have from now till the end of the year. I mean, it's, unfortunately, I mean, we've got to fund it, so. Any other questions from council? Roll call, please. Donna?
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
This, this amount for this is over and above what we had put in for the rest of the year, so this will affect our operating balance at first of the year, correct? Yeah, okay.
Okay, next, a State Prosecutor Seizure Fund, 211, Office Supplies, positive 1,500. Total 1,500.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Piper, second from Lassiter?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And go ahead and tell us about this. You weren't able to get to finance?
It's just funds from our money that comes in on state forfeitures, and I have no more office supply money left, so I just need a little bit to get me through.
This doesn't affect your revenues because this money, it's put in a special revenue account, and it's not taken into consideration during budgets or anything because she's the only person that can spend that money. So it doesn't affect the operating balance, per se.
Any questions from council? Roll call, please. Donna?
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Auditor, 332, Publication, 3,521. Total 3,521.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Webb. Donna, you want to? Total, $3,521.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Webb. Donna, you want to?
Yeah, this is for tax help publication, so what gets spent gets reimbursed, so it's kind of an in and out thing.
Questions from counsel? Roll call please, Donna.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Next, we have EMS capital improvements. We have 420 window replacement, a positive $14,000. 442 mattress replacement, positive $4,950. Total, $18,950.
Could you repeat those numbers because they're different?
Right, on your sheet, on the second line where it says 14,000, disregard that. It was an error. And the 18,950 is now split into two different accounts, so the 18,950 is now account 420 windows for 14,000, and account 442 mattresses for 4,950, which is that total of 18,950.
Okay, thank you. Move to approve.
Motion from Piper, second?
Second.
From Ballard. And this is a great example of why we have a finance committee meeting prior to, so we can get all this worked out, so. It was a little confusing, but we figured it out. Any questions from counsel? Roll call please, Donna.
Yeah. Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sure.
Next, we have opioid, I'm not going to say noid, opioid grant, 101, peer recovery coach, positive 32,500. 171, FICA, positive 4,100. 231 incentives, 7,200. And 400 kiosk, positive 16,200, for a total of $60,000.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard?
Yes.
Right, okay.
So this wipes that fund out for the year, correct? Okay.
They got their 60,000.
Okay, yeah, I'm just saying it says 60 here, and your request is for 60, so.
Any other questions from counsel? Roll call please, Donna.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Move to approve financials, transfers, and addendums, and to amend salary ordinance with like reductions, and to amend hiring freeze ordinance 2020-015.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Any questions from counsel? Roll call please, Donna.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard? Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes. Okay, I'm going to go to, this isn't on the agenda, but all of you received, I think, by email, it appears, maybe you'll receive something in the mail as well from the commissioners, requests to reduce the increase for all three commissioners. And what they would like to do would be increase that for three employees. I think these are two separate issues as far as timing, but I don't know. So I talked to Bill on this, I don't know if Bill's got any insight on this, on whether this is possible to do this.
Well, the concern was in the letter, they noted that the State Board of Accounts has said that that can be done when they, it says when the county council adopts the 2022 salary ordinance. The problem is, that's already been done. That was done as a part of your budget adoption. So I don't disagree with the State Board of Accounts, but I am concerned about DLGF. So I have reached out to their support email, and I'm awaiting an answer from them to see if we can do this. I recognize that there is a statute that says you cannot reduce an elected official's salary in the year in which it is fixed, so it's not something that can be done in January. But I do want to make sure that having already adopted the salary ordinance, that we would have the authority to go in and amend it before the end of the year. So as soon as I get that answer, I'll forward it on to all council members and the commissioners.
Does anybody else have anything they want to discuss on that, or?
Yeah, I do. I have been in this building for 30 years, and I've made some mistakes, and I will admit, I've made mistakes, and I've probably made some I don't know about, but I've never lied. And I've never been accused of lying. And I want to straighten out this right now, so people will know I did not lie. A few years ago, I was auditor, Jack Stonebraker, Jimmy St. Meyer were commissioners. Our county engineer left. They wanted to promote within and pay less money. When Jack, it has nothing to do with elected officials, and I never said it had anything to do with elected officials. When the commissioners turned in the pay voucher, the pay person came to me and said they're not paying what the ordinance says. So I came to Jack. Jack and I went to State Board of Accounts. Bill Vincent was State Board of Accounts. And Bill said, the auditor shall pay what the county council has approved in their salary ordinance. And that's why I said, we know that State Board of Accounts sometimes depends who you talk to, but that day, we were told we had to pay what the salary ordinance said. And so my position was, the day of the conversation, we had adopted, we had our budget adoption that day. So we have adopted. Has nothing to do with elected officials. When I got on this council, I probably knew about everybody in this building. And I've tried very, I've been very careful. The employee numbers, I can pretty well tell who that is. And I have been very careful to not, to not make my decisions on people, but on positions. I've tried to be very fair with the employees, and I've tried to be very fair with the taxpayers who pay our salary. We know how much we can spend now with the tax caps, we know how much we can spend, and that's what we spent. And I think I've always been very honest with everybody. When Ryan Webb was elected, I called him, didn't I, Ryan?
Yes, ma'am.
And I said, let's meet. And I was so honest with him that I'm surprised that he even speaks to me, right? I don't lie about things that I think are important. And I think this has gotten very personal. I think this whole budget time was very, Ryan Hughes says it's worse run than he's ever been through. And I think it has gotten very personal. It's almost like it's us against them. And guys, until it's not us against them, it's going to, anyway. I have been very upset about this, I've been very distraught about this, and it's over, it is done with. I will probably abstain from any voting because I think when it becomes personal, you can't make educated votes. Sorry, guys, it's the way I feel. As I said, 30 years, I've never had anybody accuse me of lying to them, so.
I'll add to that, Jane, if that's all right. You know, I think budget session, there was a lot of things that were said, and there's a lot of things that didn't necessarily need to be said that were brought up. What I'll say is this, is when we're up here, we're an elected body, which means we don't report to necessarily anybody in this county building, we report to that taxpayer within our district at large, does not necessarily matter. Sometimes we have to ask the tough questions, and we have to approach things directly with people. It may sometimes, the approach may be a little different, everybody has their own way of going about things here. When I'm up here, I'm not a funeral director. When I'm up here, I'm an elected official, so I'm going to ask those hard questions. Whether that irritates people or not does not matter to me whatsoever, because the questions have to be asked. So, like I said, budget session was hard, you know? Things get said, things get brought up. It is what it is, but just understand, we report to the taxpayer, so the questions will be asked, no matter what.
If I could add, not really so much about the budget sessions, but in general what we were discussing, with the commissioners' requests for the three specific employees, for me personally, and I don't know how everyone else feels about it, I appreciate the attempt to recognize the individual value of those employees. And I appreciate the commissioners reaching out to us via email to express their gratitude and what they were willing to do to also recognize those employees. I guess it's unfortunate that, you know, it may not be unfortunate, and there may still be something to be done, but it's unfortunate that we couldn't get it done before then. So to address what Mr. Hughes said, I would like to show my support for that as well, but that would obviously depend on what Mr. Hughes comes back with of the parameters of what we're actually allowed to do. So I just wanted to make sure everyone understood where I'm at. It'll all depend on what Mr. Hughes says. Other than that, I would love to show support for everyone, especially to follow the commissioners' recommendation.
Well, I guess what we need to let Bill know is whether there's interest on counsel for having him to look into this further to see, you know, see whether or not this is possible before the end of the year. I don't, I mean, just, I don't know, I guess I shouldn't even speculate on what we can and can't do until we hear legally, but on what we can and can't do, so. You guys tell me, I mean, if you want him to move forward, or if you're satisfied with where we're at. I mean, we're basically second guessing the budget at this point.
Well, for me, to kind of reiterate what I just said, I would support the recommendation by the commissioners if we could do, but that's just me, I'm just one person, so. But I agree with what you're saying, I mean, I wish it could have been done before that.
I'm not opposed to getting an answer, just to know what that is for my own education, but I think the concern with some of council members that I've mentioned, we've talked about it briefly, is how that impacts commissioner salaries moving forward. You know, there will come a time where our commissioners will change, and that's, but I'm not opposed, I would like to know more information on if it is possible and what that process is.
Well, and the other thing, I know, read through the letter and everything, I went back to the '22 budget and looked, and the commissioners did request an increase in their line items for each one of them specifically, that was $1,599 for each commissioner, so the request was there. You know, obviously, we didn't get that amount, but, and we did have the discussion on, you know, elected officials with the council. You know, I tried to get that reduced, and you guys agreed to leave it the same, so I guess, I don't know, my feeling is if we're going to do this on the commissioner's side, we probably need to rethink our own increase as well, and set it aside. But anyway, I think that's all subject to what can. I don't know if anybody else has got any input on whether we can or can't at this point, or we let Bill take a look and see. So am I hearing from counsel that we'd like to have Bill check into it?
It'd just be good information to know, in my opinion.
Bill, would you take a look at that and let us know?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to committee reports. Any committees to report today? Department heads and elected officials.
Jenny Honeycat, County Commissioners' Office, I want to touch on some of that. First of all, Ryan, I appreciate your support on that, Pam and I both do. Regarding the commissioners raises that were in, that was by default, I was told to increase all line items by 5%. And as far as this particular request from them, this was discussed prior to budget adoption, it just wasn't acknowledged during budget hearings. So this letter was put together after budget in hopes of still pushing it through after speaking with State Board of Accounts and learning that it still could in fact be pushed through, assuming what Bill learns lines up with what they've been told. So I just wanted to clear the air as far as that goes. Jane, I respect you very much as an elected official. I kind of felt like that was personal, I'm not sure where all that came from, I hope it wasn't, but I don't view you as a liar, I don't think Pam does either, but this all felt very personal, so I wanted to clear the air, thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any public comment?
Any public comment? We did not, let me double check, receive any emails. And on Facebook, we have one question for clarification, so the commissioners want to reduce their salaries to fund three additional county employees. And the answer is correct.
Correct. That's the way I read it, yep.
Yeah, they want to reduce their salary increase for the 2022 salary expectation, yes, it was $1,000, they want to give that to three other employees.
Reallocate it.
Yes, right.
Okay, any?
The calendar for the year?
I don't think, I mean, the question didn't come up today, so I don't see any point in that. I mean, I think they're working through that, so.
I agree.
Yeah, thank you, though.
Yeah, the calendar for 2022 budget, or not budgets, but meetings.
Yeah, we need to...
We can do it in December.
You want to do that in December?
I mean, I thought I had it on the agenda.
Yeah, I did too. It's not on the agenda, we could do it under...
I can put it in December, it's fine.
What's the date of our December meeting?
This year?
I think it's 12th, isn't it? Or, I don't know.
I don't have a copy of it in front of me.
Well, let me look on the web, hold on.
I have it on the 14th.
That sounds right.
The first week? I thought it was the second.
Because I thought the finance...
I know it's normally the beginning of the month.
Right.
And it's nothing but transfers.
Anyway, any?
Never said 14?
That's wrong.
Is the winner! Oh, yay! That is late. But it was approved, so. And I will get the calendar, I've got it here, I'll do it on December.
Okay, well, and...
I thought I had it on there, but...
Donna, that's not too late for you, is it, for the transfers?
Yeah, it's just transfer.
Well, and counsel, Denise had sent out the calendars for you guys to take a look at, and we didn't, I received, I think, one question on that about the 10 o'clock meeting, and that was on a holiday. So there was one meeting in there where we'll meet at 10 o'clock instead of...
February, I believe.
In February, because of a holiday in there. Any other comments from counsel?
Speaking of holidays, I hope everyone has a happy Thanksgiving.
That was my next. We'd like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, it's coming here real soon. Yeah, this week, so, all right. Anything else?
I did want to say something real fast, I almost forgot about this. So there's been some conversation a little bit about some of those refugees from Afghanistan have been settling, and I just wanted to remind everybody to treat everyone as a warm and welcoming community that we are, and just try to show the best of what Delaware County has in your interactions with our new residents. That's all.
All right, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. I had a motion from...
Who was it?
I think it was Piper.
I got Jessica and Jane. No, no, I didn't open my mouth.
Oh, you didn't?
Jessica and Ryan.
Motion to adjourn from Jessica, or, motion from Jessica, second from Ryan.
Ballard.
Ballard, yeah, there we go, all right. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Wow.
Thank you. Don't forget to sign.
Yeah, you got to sign all our papers.